Glad you're here. To the flag of the United States of America, into a republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
I'd like to thank all the audience for showing up tonight. We'll move to public comment. If there's anyone that can start with the audience, raise your hand if you'd like to share any public comment. Think about it. You're good. All right. We'll move to the Zoom, folks on Zoom. Let's see if anyone would like to make a public comment. Raise your hand. Seeing none, we will move on past, that was Agenda number three for a public comment. We will move to the second reading and adoption amendments for the updates to traffic rules. Mr. Sawyer will be joining us. Thank you, Chip.
A lot of cords tonight. A slightly wrong street name in the ordinances was brought to my attention by a member of the police department. It was leading to the ability to cancel tickets for turning right on red because the wrong streets were named in the ordinance. We looked at a couple of the things and found there were some spaces where in the traffic rules, there were parking spaces referenced, for instance, that, or left-turn lanes that no longer existed. So this is just a little, tiny little bit of a correction attempt. The first change is to change the name from North Main Street to South Main Street to prohibit right-hand on red light when you're turning from Fairfield Street onto South Main Street. Next change is to remove the reference to a left-turning lane to turn onto Congress Street from Main Street. That lane no longer exists. We repealed some Sunday restrictions on parking on a side of Fairfield Street because this is redundant with another section of the rules that prohibits parking on that portion of Fairfield Street. We removed reference to a police parking spot in front of City Hall, no longer exists, and we removed some rules that went across the board for all of our parking lots, some of the timing and when you needed a permit, when you didn't. Each lot now kind of has its own rules in how it manages who can be there, when, whether you need a permit, whether you need to pay a meter, whether you need to pay the garage. We also added mention of the actual parking garage to the description of the city's parking That is the slate of amendments.
Were all those changes on there last month, Chip?
Yes.
I thought we were changing that police parking spot to the mayor's spot.
We did a public poll and it just, it barely, barely didn't, you know, not very popular. It was close.
Chip, speaking of parking, has there been a change on Church Street at all for parking in front of the churches, the east side of Church Street?
Nothing I'm aware of. I'm not familiar with that. I think there's an allowance for it, but I'm not sure. I'd have to read the ordinance.
Because yesterday, a couple of parishioners from St. Paul's got tickets for parking where they've always parked before. So I didn't know if there had been a change there. And I see there's like a cardboard sign there today that says, "No parking," but I don't know if that's...
Was that parking on the west, east side?
The east side.
So the west side was full and then they parked on the...
That's always been permitted on a Sunday, I think.
Yes. And they used to have a sign there, I think, that said, "Parking, you could park there on Sundays." But I don't know, two people got tickets anyway, I think they were going to fight them. So I don't know if that enters into any of this, but got me bringing it up tonight.
It doesn't enter into this, and we only brought these particular amended sections. We don't have the full ordinance to review. Something we'll look into.
Okay.
See what's going on.
Thank you.
It would be interesting parking on both sides.
I think it's happened before.
It was, yeah, it's happened before.
We'll start with what the ordinances actually say, and we'll kind of go from there in terms of whether or not we think there needs to be a change, I think.
So you do some more work and get back to Maria on that, Chip?
Yeah.
Any other questions for Chip on this?
I'm hoping we adopt the amendment first, please, for traffic rules.
Second. We'll hear from Chad, seconded by Mike. Anyone in the audience have any comments on this? Seeing none, all those in favor of approving the changes, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Chip, you're going to stand there because we'll be back too quick, but we can send it around.
Okay.
The adoption passes. Chip, moving on to the second reading of the water and wastewater allocation ordinance?
Yes. This is some small changes to affect how the Northern Sewer District is affected by the affiliation fee. We have the whole ordinance here, so what you want to do is keep going down, and on the left margin, you'll see a line where we propose a change. And I'll go through it real quick. The changes are either struck out or underlined. But first change we're making is to apply the water affiliation fee to the Route 7 North Wastewater District. So that's for water. Where then, you'll see some changes that remove the Route 7 North Sewer District from the term extraterritorial. Actually, by striking it out, it actually adds that district to the definition of extraterritorial. Couple clarification changes, like in, on item 20 on page three, making sure that folks know that they're paying both the water and wastewater affiliation fees. Page five, there's actually no change at the top of the page, but at the bottom. We now sort of, we're modernizing the city council's ability to update the fees over time, basically saying it can be adjusted by vote of the council without amending the ordinance. Page six, we added, a lot of these changes have to do with the fact that we added in a number five. We kind of stuck it in there, so some of the other section numbers are changing. But we added item five, that approved allocations shall be recorded in the municipality where the property is located by the party receiving the allocation. The affiliation fees run with the property, and so it's always a good idea when something runs with the property to have it recorded in the land records.
Should that be done by the party receiving the allocation? In other words, I guess that duly the case ever closing and the buyer records everything. But if there's opposition to these allocation fees, well, how can we be sure, right away at least, that the buyer will record, make sure this document is recorded?
Well, we could do it. You know, and we can check them.
Yeah, we can check them.
Yeah.
Paul, we could do it, either way. I know we had discussions that it's vital that they be recorded.
That is correct.
If you have the confusion, if you're up that happen, but I just don't know who should do it, who needs to be done.
It does need to be done.
Tom, what's your, you have any thoughts on that?
I suggest that it shouldn't be the city's responsibility to do it. We can enforce that and make sure it's done as one of our final checks before the water is actually turned on, we'll make sure it's recorded.
It is a shall statement, so we do have grounds to do that. And complying with the ordinance, you need to record that document. If you're not complying with the ordinance, you don't get your allocation, or you don't, we don't turn the...
So there's an incentive for the buyer to do it. I don't care who does it, like you say, but...
So we'll, yeah, we'll handle that operationally. Yeah.
All right.
I think the ordinance should be the ideal, is it should be the buyer, and then operationally we'll make sure it happens.
Okay, good. But I'm just wondering, what's going to be less time, if we just do it from the get-go? Or, Tom, to your point, if we have to send someone to the town or wherever to check?
And the challenge is sometimes the allocations are grand, and it could be years before they're used.
Time is of the essence to the buyer, though. I mean, even if there's a delay on the city side, it's really, it's really, it's going to affect the buyer more than anything else.
But going back to your point, Tom, if it's, if it's done, the allocation is given, if it's in the deed, it's in the deed, it doesn't matter how long, right? I mean, if someone's going to do the title work on it, it's going to be, they'll find it.
Right. We'll have to get involved at some level, because if it's a development, starts out as one parcel, subdivided along the way, so the master developer will probably record it, and then we'll have to ensure it's recorded from each parcel.
So how do we...
Then we get into this mess because we, I say mess, we sort of had confidence that the developer was going to, was going to record it, right? It never did.
It's probably in our long-term macro interest to accept the additional administrative birds, and record them ourselves. Now, if you're getting one of these, you might want to record it to protect yourself. But we've had more problems with people not knowing that it was there than we have people knowing it was there and wanting it to be there and not having it be recorded. So with council's permission, I ask you to consider an amendment that approved allocations shall be recorded in the municipality where the property is located by the city. No more?
I would make that in a motion.
Is there a second? Second. Motion by Bob, seconded to amend this document as... Who has amended, was the same or not?
I can quickly pull together a modified version for you to sign tonight during the meeting. Yep?
Well, I mean, we did a motion, we'll reflect, I guess, is there anything else that we needed to...
We're just quickly updating billing to quarterly instead of annual. And from references to, just changing some of the nature of where we were when the ordinance was first passed versus today, but now it's, instead of saying that the moratorium shall be appealed, it says it was appealed, keeps in the provision that...
Not appealed.
Repealed, it was repealed. And keeping in the provision that the moratorium still does kick in if this ordinance is ever struck down. And now on the effective date, it lists when the ordinance first became effective, and it will list this date as the date of last amendment if you adopt it tonight.
Tom, I don't know if this came from you or you and Chip, but thanks for the ability to go to the quarterly payments. I think that helps short speaking come experience.
So we do have an existing motion, and second motion by Bob, seconded by Chad. Any further questions? I'm going to, I will recuse myself just to my day job. So, okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Hearing none, the amendments have been approved. Chip?
Thank you.
Next, Jim Davison, Mr. Mayor, I'm hoping to recuse myself.
Chip, you want to produce a quick version?
I will, as soon as I know. Are we doing the awning now? Is that... We, you probably know the main squeeze, Jeremy and Lucia Perez's business out, you know, on the way to BFA. They have a lot of square footage. They've taken over basically two storefronts, doing very well there, and they're looking for the ability to have an awning, which will add, add an improvement to the facade, but also probably allow for more activity on the sidewalk, which is always a great part of downtown. So as we've done with other storefronts, we're proposing that the city goes 50-50 on the cost of a new awning for the main squeeze. Current estimate is $5,244. And we have a conceptual design, so we're suggesting this be contingent upon being able to get the permits, of course, but also working with city staff on the final design.
Any questions on Chip? Thank you for that, Chip. So I would entertain a motion to approve the facade grant for the main squeeze. Is there a motion?
Make that motion to approve the facade grant and 50% of the quoted awning costs with the contingency that Mr. Sawyer mentioned.
You have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Marie, motion by Mike, seconded by Marie. Any questions for Chip on this? We've done our color match. Chip, you agree with color?
Yeah. You can choose your favorite green if you want.
Who does the cofor us?
Okay, all those in favor of the grant approval, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? We have one recuse, Chad recused himself. Thank you, Chip. Let's move on to...
Thank you.
Dom, the city clerk description. Job description, Mr. Speaker.
Circulated electronically a copy of the city clerk job description. Perished copies for the future discussion. But we're eager to get the ads running and put a position of city clerk discretion.
Hopefully everyone had a chance to look at the job description. If I remember it, if I remember, does anyone have any comments or changes to that?
Well done, so I'd be in favor of that.
So entertain a motion to approve the job description as presented. Motion by Chad, seconded by Mike. Any further questions or comments for Dom? Dom, thanks for that. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Hearing none, the job description is approved as presented. Moving on to item number eight, which is consider adoption of resolution designating $5 million in pool debt as bank qualified. Tom, do you want to join us?
Thank you. So last meeting, you approved the debt issuance through Moscoma Bank, and this is just one of the administrative steps that we have to legally take to issue the debt. At our next meeting, we'll, we'll have some more formal bond financing documents, but this is just one of the steps along the way, and it gives us a better interest rate, something the city hasn't done before, but that's because we do it through the bond bank typically. But this one, we're going directly.
And that rate is?
2.14% for 25 years.
How much?
2.14% for 25 years with inflation at seven, so.
Wow. When we were doing our projections, what were we looking at, two years ago?
More in the range of three.
They were north of three.
Yeah.
Yeah, I know, but might be a point there. People, mortgages are like up in the 5% range now, right?
Yeah.
Wow. To councilmen's donors, a comment, we're going to cut the conversation short so that the rates don't go up. There we go. So entertain a motion to approve this. We have a motion by Chad, seconded by Mike. Any comments? On the folks on Zoom? Let's protect, will be still May, June, somewhere in there?
June 1. June 1 is the planned target date, pushing everything towards.
Before we go, I just wanted to say that Tom has really found us some cheap money over and over again. Like, I'm increasingly surprised at how you're able to find a way to save us money in the long run.
There's a, it's nice to do it a little differently, and then you benefit when the economy's, you know, up and down, there's a flight to quality in the markets, and we're quality.
Dom, what are we doing with the old building? Has C school said they want it for locker rooms? Have we decided that the unit is not there yet?
We're not there yet. They can have it, they can have as much of it as they want. You know, their question really is just how much do we reclaim the site?
Okay, so we have a motion, a second, to consider the adoption of a resolution designating the facility to pool debt and bank qualified. Any other comments, questions? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Hearing none, the motion passes.
Thank you.
We would now move to item number nine, which is the city manager report. Consider the adoption of proposed amendments to the sale agreement for lot two of the bond redevelopment. Will you start with that, Dom?
There's a proposed resolution which authorizes the mayor to sign the documents associated with this amendment, the purchase and sale agreement. You recall that we previously signed this agreement. We're now in the march towards closing. In route in that march, we discovered a couple things that need to be coordinated and massaged on site, mostly related to accessing the city utilities and the sequencing around the Envano cleanup, the issuing of the certificate for the completion from the agency of natural resources, and the bringing in of non-city utilities. So all of that gets captured in this amendment to purchase and sell, which represents mostly operational matters as well, substantive changes in this and impact whether we're paying for the property, what we're...
Do we have to read this entire post-resolution, Dom, or do we, can we just...
Incorporate it direct into the motion.
Okay. I'm hoping we consider the adoption of proposed amendments to purchase and sale agreement for lot two of Fonda redevelopment and company in resolution, if any. Motion, a second, regarding the property. Dom, I'm sorry.
I'll second.
We have a motion, now we have a second. Any further questions for Dom on this? Dom, any other to add?
No, straightforward.
Okay. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Hearing none, proposed resolution regarding... And then next on the agenda was the resolution regarding 121 Federal Street.
I'll wait for that for a sec so we can look at the stretch of the site.
You don't want to try to track it down tomorrow?
What's that?
You don't want to try to track it down tomorrow?
Exactly.
Who took that home?
Yeah, I think it's just Tim. Send it back. These guys are, speaking of rate risk, they're eager to close. So next up is the resolution and proposed sale of 121 Federal Street. As previously discussed, we are now ready to finalize a deal with St. Albans Creamery, Dairy Farmers of America, to purchase the so-called Jolly Lot. The sale price is $400,000, and the voters have given us approval to spend $500,000 cleaning it up. So we will clean the site, and this PNS proposes that after it's cleaned, settle it to DFA for $400,000, and they will then incorporate that into their campus and their redevelopment scenario. They're not exactly sure what they want to do there, but they know they, they want to do something there.
What did...
One more piece. We're less concerned about what goes there from a TIF perspective, because the increment in the rest of the district is already sufficient to cover the debt service on the 500, and a good chunk of that increment has come from the growth that has already occurred at the co-op.
Thank you. Phase one, days two have been completed?
Yes, yeah.
And what was, was anything significant on days two?
No, there's no, you know, there's no, there's no Fonda, the estimates for actual cleanup, I think, are like 350 through 75. So we feel pretty confident we can, with the 500, will cover the cleanup costs of the associated professional services. Just for the record, for the minutes, the official public notice on the TIF bonds should be the hearings that we had in March. And so if anything that I just said is inconsistent by dollar frame, doesn't change. The notice to the voters should be... Dom should write that down.
I'm hoping we have our proposed resolution authorizing the sale of 121 Federal Street.
We have a motion on the resolution for 121 Federal. Motion by Chad, seconded by Mike. Any further questions or comments?
I just want to say that this property, this property directly south of it has made a tremendous improvement in the last 20 or so years, so happy to see it cleaned up.
Thank you.
So we have a motion, a second. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? None passes, the resident, none, no opposition chair, the resolution passes. Can I sort of go off track here a little bit, since we're talking Federal Street? Chip, I know you're applying for another branch or federal.
Yes.
Which reminds me, I have your letter here.
Oh, thank you. I'd love to be assigned here, too.
What, here, can you give us a quick overview of where you see that going, Federal Street and timing and all that?
We are going after one of the large transportation grant opportunities to construct the rest of the entire connector, every, from the intersection of the Sash and Main Street, create the new road, then hang a right, go down Lemon Drive, improve Lemon Drive, go down Allen Street, all the way down to Federal Street, make improvements, build the sidewalks and everything to Lower Newton, put the signal at Lower Newton, and then come up. Because this is the only grant like this that allows you to propose a project big enough. We're talking about a $10 million project. So we're going to keep going after opportunities like this to build this project, you know, indefinitely, we're going to keep trying to build it. So for this grant application, we go through the whole project. There are other opportunities where we can middle away at it, but this opportunity is weird. If it's funded, then we would be looking at potentially building the project in the next three years.
But nothing valuable this year.
It would not be anything this year, yeah.
Okay, thanks for that. I questioned the ballot and...
What would be the match?
Two.
Two million.
How much of that have we already put into that?
None.
It's in the TIF financial plan.
Even the intersection of Federal Catherine?
How much have we spent so far?
Yeah, how much have we already, how much of that tube can we say we've already spent into it?
None.
Two months out. A new tube.
It's a new tube.
So that, you know, that's something for us to consider as it comes back, as we look at preparing for our substantial change to VEPSE. You know, we've got a year left on the TIF to issue debt. And, you know, is that project critical enough that we want to spend $2 million on it? You know, at the staff level, we continue to think that it is. But, you know, that's the timing for that question, right? For, as we continue to make these applications, we have to be ready to spend two if we get it, you know? And that's, you know, to get eight and you spend two, that's a pretty good incentive. But this is, this is, if we, this is the last time I'm trying to leave the station, you know? If I don't... If I don't, if we don't get, if we don't provide R2 and get a sizable raise grant, this is never getting built. Which doesn't mean that we wouldn't do pieces of the project. The sidewalks along Federal Street, for instance. The Lemon Street Bridge, you know, some of those are standalone projects that have merit on their own.
Good, thanks, Chip.
Thank you.
We're moving on to item C, under the manager's report, and that's pool updates. Don?
Not a whole lot here, just, we're shooting for June one. We've had a lot of small troubleshooting along the way. The Tim was instrumental in helping us get a logical switch from one of the municipal utilities that was critical to getting the electrical system hooked up. We're continuing to have that deficit of about two hundred and fifty thousand. And we'll have a final number on that as we get to the close of the project. I would plant the seed that the most logical way to deal with that, I think, is just to retire it over a year or two with LOT proceeds to flow in. So, we wouldn't issue new debt, we can just cover it in the short term, the short-term bargain, and then retire that with the LOT proceeds in the next year or two. So, planted that seed. But, Kelly's hiring staff, we're beginning to think through some operational details of what it's gonna be like to run a pool that size in the summer. Programming is off the charts. Everybody's signing up like crazy for camps and swim lessons early up there, so.
It's nice not to jam swim lessons into six weeks, you know?
Yeah, yeah.
Spend a little bit, so we went and stuck some slide classes.
Totally, totally. I think we're gonna, we're gonna make a lot of money on lifeguard training as well. We've got, Isaac is one of the few certified people, trainers in the state that can actually train lifeguards, so. There's a shortage of lifeguards right now, so people are gonna be scrambling to find them, except for the us to train.
Chad, to give you context, I suspect we'll end June thirtieth this year and have well over six figures in sales for next year already.
Cool.
Impressive. Have we got a membership yet? I won't be there.
Good, good. That's all I got.
Is there a cap on the number of memberships they sell?
Not yet. You know, I, yeah. Oh, excuse me, were you looking to buy one? Yes, there's a cap.
We're getting our kids' memberships restricted.
There's a family one, right? Is there a family?
Two hundred of them.
I don't know, I'll find out. It's really harassing, means we can tell the kids, "Go to the pool."
Yeah.
Two hundred for a year?
Three hundred for town. So, okay, moving on to the mayor's report. A few things. Maple Festival returns next week on Friday. I'm out of town, so they have an opening, so I volunteer either you, Don, or you, Chad. What do you just?
It could be great, Chad.
Chad will do it for you, I believe, then? I don't know if they're gonna, I just don't want to send down, but if you can find someone to fill it in. You have to have a, you have to be able to drink a glass, a pint glass of maple milk. I don't know if you can make a letter on it. You can. So, Don, you're probably up there.
Black those in town.
So wise.
So, that, that may, you may hear a little bit more about it. But, I think folks have heard, they're moving forward with a lot of things, but a lot of, a lot of destinations that postponed for a year. So, we'll see how it goes, but hopefully the weather will hold, the sugars have had a great year so far.
Do re. Those are it.
Good, good to have that. We also have, Chip, I turn to you, Queen on Kingman, right?
Kingman Fest, May seventh, yeah. Queen Revival Concert, and other activities for kids and the whole family.
May seventh?
May seventh, from five to nine.
This is a Saturday night, right?
That's a, I think it's a Saturday, I don't know, it's a Saturday.
So, there's that. I did have a conversation regarding, with Kathy Mannman regarding the car show. It sounds like Handys have offered up their parking lot along Main Street, so she may do a kids event along with the car show for a big parade scenario. And I believe the farmers market starts back up maybe?
May fifteenth.
So, a lot of activities?
Unfortunately, May fourteen.
May fourteen, so getting back to somewhat normal, and I know there's still, still issues going on around COVID, but making some headway. We had a nice visit, Mike joined us last Thursday, I guess, for the House Commerce Committee showed up in St. Albans and did a tour of the downtown, had some conversations about how we got to this point. Don joined us and gave him a tour and educated him. And then we looked at some other activities throughout the county, throughout, throughout the region. And they were very impressed with what, what's been accomplished, and I think it proved to, to pay some dividends to have them, and it's probably not a bad idea to do that more often with a variety of things, so.
We did have a trucker to illustrate how wonderful the United Federal Street connector is, Don.
Speaking of noise, I, I understand there was a noise ticket that was given out recently. I thought there, I know.
There's been more than one.
I know of one specifically, that we had a neighbor complain, and the police addressed it, and so, I don't know what the outcome will be, but it's good that the police are following up on that. I think that's about all I have, unless I think of something moving forward. Marie, we'll start with you.
Okay, well, we did have our neighborhood watch meeting in March, end of March. We had eleven people total, two of them were police officers, police officers that came. The two officers have been kind of circulating around, keeping tabs on one of the kind of problem neighborhoods, and things were very quiet this winter, don't know if it's just because it's winter. But, anyway, we had a great turnout of people. Everybody's pretty happy with, you know, what the officers have done, and things have seemed to be pretty calm, so. Good turnout, we're planning on meeting again probably late summer or early fall. Try to meet every six months unless some, you know, there's a lot of issues, but works have been good. We passed out some neighborhood watch stickers to put on our doors. So, that, that went well. Other than that, things are fairly quiet down my way. I do still, I have still noticed that the walk, don't walk sign on the west, northwest corner of Lake is still pointing more towards Fairfield Street. It should be pointing straight across to the heart, so that hasn't been, you know, fixed yet. But if someone could, you know, straighten it, especially with Maple Festival coming up, I think that I'd be happy to have that where it should be. I think that's probably all I've got.
Marie, have you had any discussion regarding the block party for the summer or anything?
Actually, the Turning Point wants to throw one, and they would like to have it in September, which is recovery month, so they're talking about doing a plan, and they've got, they do have a meeting coming up tomorrow night, but I'm gonna be busy here, so I probably won't make that one. But, it's kind of a planning meeting, but, yep, Melinda wants to do one, and so I guess that's where I'll be.
Thank you. Bob?
Nothing specifically on Ward five. Marty, I've talked to Marty, and I think he shared with other people too. He's got, he's got his paving schedule to bring, yeah, bring Barlow Street is on the list, which I'm happy to see. So, I've got people on Beverly Court that are unhappy that it's not gonna be covered this year on the repaving. But in general, just throughout the city, I'd like to ask him or have him, the public works, I know they've got a lot on their plate, do a lot of crosswalk painting, because all, so many crosswalks are worn away. I do a lot of walking, especially on the east side, and they're all worn away, so I'd like that done if possible early on rather than later on in the walking season, do it. But other than that, I don't have anything that I want.
Marty, are you with us?
Marty's in Ireland.
Oh.
Marty was delayed on his way home.
Sure he was. So, that, I was thinking that was it with that.
So, that's you, Marie, so that's not Marty?
No, but, yeah, okay. I didn't really realize he went to Ireland. Okay, nothing else, Bob?
No, I don't have anything else.
And Bob's work, and are we doing well? Think about, like, by Barlow Street? That arrangement working out well with?
Head start.
Head start, yeah, yeah, it's working great, project. See you in here.
Mike?
Things are pretty good in Ward four. I ran into some folks who, even though it was muddy, we were all out using the, the baskets that are still up, disc golf, and there were some folks up from Colchester, so if we can get the seasonal baskets up now, and I think we're done, the sledding and ski season, holes one to nine, there are already people visiting St. Albans to use the disc golf at heart, which is cool. And went to a birthday event this weekend too, that was at the lodge, and it's just great up there. It's gonna be so amazing when the pool's open too, kind of cap all that off. But, yeah, things are pretty good. I'll be reporting our charter bill on the House floor first thing in the morning, so I believe that'll pass as easily on the floor as it did GovOps, and then we'll get it through the Senate and have the ability to do this appointment once we find some good candidates for the clerk trecker position, so. I think that's about it.
Thank you, Mike. Chad?
Just a couple quick things. I just paid the late fee on the dog licenses, so make sure you have your dog license. There was some graffiti down in my neighborhood, so please keep your eye out for more white national stuff, so. It's back, I was hoping it was gone after data got posted online, but apparently not, so.
So, stickers?
Yeah, white, yeah, the white national supremacist stuff, so not happy about that, but if there were any reports of a guy out spray painting, that was me, I was trying to paint over it, so. I am going to be in the park, so, Don, just a heads up, if someone calls and says there's a tractor in the park, Marty dropped some topsoil off for me, so I can smooth out some big divots in the park, so I hope you're there. And the last thing I have, I want to thank all Spectrum volunteers, the people that spent the night out. Dominic has been sick now for a few days because of it. And all everyone else to recognize homeless youth. I was unable to participate this year, but I will be dropping a check off at Spectrum, so if there are people that would like to donate, I'm sure the act will still take money. So, thank you for everyone that helped organize it and everyone who volunteered.
Chad, you know, on those, on the Patriot Front thing, that, that was really the genesis behind the All the Welcome campaign, you know? And I just wonder if any of those are locations where you could fight speech with speech by, you know, putting up? You know, we still, we've still got a gazillion yard signs, and we've still got the window stickers, right? So, if you see any opportunity for that, I mean, I would.
Yeah, unfortunately, this was probably on private property, so it was a Jersey barrier, and I think it's SP Collins, it was the Jersey barrier. It'd be super nice if we could at least go and turn the Jersey barrier around, so it's not shining out, I appreciate it, but I did the best, I was, it was freezing cold, and the paint really doesn't like to stick to concrete block when it's freezing cold, so.
Okay.
Thank you.
So, Don, you slept out?
I did.
Yeah, so did I. Did you, Michael?
I did not, this year it was last year, no?
And you didn't, Chad?
I, last year I did, and, yeah, this year I did not.
Interesting.
I see a pattern. So, I guess you and I will be with Marty next year.
The other thing that Spectrum could use, if folks wanted to do something other than funds, is that they've been serving meals for the youth there, and having people in the community sign up to provide meals, and we've done that a couple of times, and.
So, just really appreciate it.
Thank you, Mike.
Go ahead, Marie.
I'm sorry, we had circle at church today, and that was one of the things we decided, so one group is gonna make salads, and then the other is gonna do the food, so we discussed that today. And I need to sign up for maybe two this month, so.
Gary, if you're at the store just buying a, for a pack of Gary or something, to drop it off, so. It's at what I consider the old gays market. I don't know what anyone born in the eighties would call it, but that's where we used to do our shopping when we were younger, so.
So, we, we hope to have Mark Redmond and maybe staff members from Spectrum to do a presentation next month. To talk about that, it seems like the space and the, the organization thing, well received, so we'll hear more about that next month.
Yeah, just, my neighbor's kiddo goes there, and he absolutely loves it, so they're very welcoming, so. It's a, it's a great place for kids to come.
And I just want to add a couple more things, Greenup Days, May seventh. I'll be in touch with folks.
How can I do Green Day all morning if I'm gonna be partying with Queen in the afternoon?
Taking a nap, I think.
So, we'll have more information out on that. It's been, it's growing every year, I've had, Myland has reached out, or my interest has reached out to get bags of National Guard, to other businesses in the industrial park, so. Expecting a good turnout, it's slowly growing over the years. And then the day after that, after Chad, you get up and dying.
I don't know, at this rate?
After the Kingman Fest is, the Run for Gym is on Sunday, the, it's actually Sunday the first, so I miss your, your say. Sure. So, the Run for Gym is for those that don't, may not know, benefit for the gym bashout fund to help, to help families who are impacted financially by cancer and cancer treatment, and being out of work and all that, paying bills, so it's a fund that's been around for twenty plus years, so.
It is a great organization, unfortunately, I only run for bears and for cubs, so.
It's a walk a lot too.
Oh, it's a walk, I can do that, I can do that.
Tim, I won't be around that weekend at all, my granddaughter graduates from college, so we're gonna be in the end for that weekend.
I may end up cutting back our pickup spots anyway. Oh, Nicole, I haven't forgotten, Nicole, obviously, we'll be getting bags as well, so.
The Girl Scouts and the Voice Scouts will be involved.
And then, I remember from the Voice Scouts, I found a contact.
I, I know the Voice Scouts, yeah.
Um, do you have it? Thank you, Chip. Any other business?
Chip, did you circulate that ordinance?
Yeah, I think you have it in your stack.
You mentioned it, brought it back, yeah. Okay, let's move on to item number, no other business, anyone? Let's move on to item number thirteen, approval of meeting minutes of three fourteen.
I was not present, they said I was present, but I was absent, the only thing I know.
Thank you, Bob. So, we have a motion to approve the minutes of three fourteen with one correction. There's a second.
I'll second, okay.
Second, I agree. Any other corrections or amendments? Changes? Nope? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
In the opposition? Hearing none, minutes approved, we move on to the approval of warrants, three thirty-one. Chad moves to approve three thirty-one warrant, seconded by Marie. Any comments, questions? Hearing none, all of the favors say aye. In the opposition, hearing none, the warrant is approved for three twenty-one. Any other business come before the council, we will, I think, listen to you.
So, we, we, you know, the record, ten seconds later. So, we're, we're, you know, the record at ten, one, seven, three.
We started that. Want to do a adjournment? All of the favor say aye?
Aye.
We are adjourned as of seven thirty and twenty-five.